Point that was made, what are the parameters? The operational, the operational items were not included because they're operational. So somehow conveying a better message on what type of input we want.
Right.
Gary?
I think we're going down the correct road because it's also gives us, as Nancy pointed out, the opportunity to not only glean wisdom from the citizenry, but also to the opportunity to educate them on what the history is of where we've gotten and how we've gotten to where we are. So I think, I think that's, it's an excellent suggestion and I, I'm just thinking, are we talk like a format like we did with the charrettes with the, the library and stuff like that where maybe we have stations and bulletin boards and
Right.
people write up and so forth and then we glean that and then maybe have a follow-up and, and then go about our business at that point. I think something like that did very well for us in the, in the library and it could do something very well for us here.
We did that a few years ago, we can do it again. You want a facilitator?
I think we should.
I think we should, yeah. Yeah, I think it would be great.
We will plan on a workshop with a facilitator.
Okay. So do we have
We need approval as amended.
Approval's amended.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve as amended, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. And next we have addition to building divisions staffing for fiscal year 2019.
Good morning, Randall Cole, Chief Building Official. This is just to maintain customer service and, and keep my resources in line where they should be rather than pulling building inspectors off in the afternoon with their regular duties to do line of grades or deal with some drainage issues on new construction. I'd like to relegate that to a specific person.
I think that's very important that we have availability for that.
And we do need the interaction with public works with the money you've appropriated for drainage projects.
So this will give us a better opportunity to keep a handle on the swale issue?
New construction?
Okay.
Yes. And when we go out and deal with a, with a drainage site on new construction, it's, it's not just a drive-by. Typically the neighbors like to be contacted and have a conversation and so it gets into a 20 or 30 minute program, which is okay, but those are other things we're not getting done with that particular professional out there, so I'd like to
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I would move approval.
We have a motion second to approve the staffing, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, this comes out of the building fund, which is an enterprise fund?
Yes, and Kristen Simeone, interim finance director for the record. We will be coming back in October for the actual appropriation of the funds to fund the position, but they wanted to get going with staffing the position.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have the project priorities for the special use fund.
No, no we don't.
Oh wait, where are we at?
Buckley's Pass.
For land purchase?
Oh yeah, why is that not on, it's on the paper but online? Okay, now we're going to see appropriation of funds for purchase of land survey and closing costs for Buckley's Pass, additional harbor access.
Yeah, so again Kristen Simeone with interim finance director with finance. We're just coming back to you, the land purchase had been approved, but we're asking for an appropriation from the special use fund as a loan while we're waiting for the assessments to be approved, $453,000. That includes the purchase plus closing costs.
Questions, comments? Go ahead.
There's, Kristen, in the documents for closing costs, there's a mistake on the Taylor Road contract, I thought the purchase price was 40,000. This says 44,000.
We'll have to check with
It is 40,000. They do have, and I suppose if they want to give us 44,000, we'll take it, but
Right, but that's not correct.
It is for, this document you have attached, this is for our land purchase.
Okay, the reason I'm bringing this up is because in conjunction with the next agenda item, I have had a lot of people, because this is my district, I have had a huge amount of citizen input this weekend from people that live in the Bird section who will be assessed for this project, who are now very concerned that it appears that it's now gone up to two and a half million. When you look at the priorities for the special use fund, for the two loans, it's 453,000 for the land purchase and then it's 2 million for the actual construction of the channel. And this bill of goods was sold to the citizens in the Bird section as a million and a half project and now we're up a million dollars from that. So I'm very concerned that this is not the way it was, it was sold to the people that live in the Bird section and we're going to have a huge outpouring of very vocal people very shortly if this is where we're at. So I want to make sure that we're, we've got some accurate numbers before we move any further forward.
So we currently only have an estimate for the construction and we're not sure what the, the actual bids will come in for.
Okay, but you can't take, you can't take a project and tell the citizens who are going to pay for it that it's going to be a million and a half and then six months later it's two and a half. That's not acceptable to me.
Gary?
Okay, I understand your concern Lynn, however, I'd like to point out a couple of things. One is, is there is the potential for some grant money available, we don't know that it is or isn't.
Right.
Also, we also know from the numbers that we do have that the estimated increase in value of the properties will be between, as I believe, 25,000 to almost 80,000 dollars per lot for the dirt itself. So we are still looking, our, our constituents are looking at a 25 to one greater ROI even if we go up to a thousand dollar assessment. With that said, we've been talking about this project for over 20 years, this is not a time for us to get weak kneed, I, I believe. And even at two and a half million, it's still going to be a good deal. Now, if it gets up to five million, I'm absolutely, and I'm just throwing that number out by the way, it's not a concrete number, okay? I just want to say that at some point we do have to say ouch, but I don't think we're close to an ouch number at this point in time and we would be doing a disservice because when we've postponed things, we've seen, such as the library is a good example, we see those costs go up even further. I think it's time for us to go forward and go forward now.
I'm not suggesting that we don't. My only concern is that the, the amount has changed dramatically in six months and that there's a lot of people talking about it.
Well, the amount's still going to change when, I mean, until we had a permit, we didn't know what we were building.
I know that.
So the numbers, that's why we never really wanted to say a number, it was always a guesstimate because until we had that permit in our hand, we didn't know the parameters and I think our engineer did an excellent job of trying to give us the best estimate that he could. I mean, if, unfortunately
I don't disagree with that.
Yes.
I don't disagree with any of what you're saying, I'm just saying that what the comments are that I've been receiving for the last few days are
So I'm confused Lynn, are you proposing that we do something else at this moment?
I'm just
Or are you proposing that we still go ahead?
No, I, I want to, I just want to know how, how we got to two and a half million when we don't really know what it's going to cost. Where are we coming up with two and a half million all of a sudden?
The land purchase came in and was approved.
And we knew that.
Okay, and then the original construction estimate was 1.5 million and recently we've been told that it's probably going to be closer to 2 million.
Was that from the engineering firm?
I believe it was through the engineering and through discussions with the divisions in charge of
So the price tag has basically gone up a half a million dollars.
Correct.
Does the construction estimate also include Hans Wilson's fees that we've already paid?
Yeah, it's all inclusive.
Okay. I, I understand, you know, what, how residents can feel that when we've perhaps tossed a number out there, on the other hand, the reality is it hasn't been bid, it's, we don't have a, a number. So I can understand exactly what you're saying Lynn, I've had some people comment myself like, wow, the numbers, it seems to be increasing. It's also a sign of the times too, because we've had a lot of other projects, the costs have gone up on them as well, so.
How close are we to bidding this out?
Oh, we're a little ways away. Hans Wilson, our engineer, is putting together the final design and then he'll be preparing the bid specs. We haven't even had an assessment hearing yet.
So maybe we need him to come back and have another discussion here about where he's, you know, the bids, where he thinks the bids are going and the justification for the increase in
Soon as he has the final design and bid specs, he'll come back to council.
Perfect.
Yep, I think it's important. And, you know, by the time it's all said and done, maybe we'll be around the 2 million mark, I mean, you know, but we don't know yet. He's got to finish the design and put the bid specs together and, and see where his thoughts are at that point.
And I think any delay in that Lynn is really going to drive it.
I'm, please don't misunderstand, I'm not suggesting we delay it, I just am concerned that all of a sudden it jumped so high. I mean, this is, when, when the very first meeting took place, it was sold to the citizens as a project
Planning number, it was a planning, yeah, planning number.
I know that, I know that, but that's perception, it's all perception and it's, I'm telling you what people are saying to me and
Well, it seems to me then it behooves us to educate the people, that one is, is explain to them what kind of reverse return on investment they're going to get for this project and also what the difference is between it and where we're at so that we can go forward. Because as many people as there are, they're going to express that concern, there's other people biting at the bit that we haven't done this 10 years ago.
I totally agree.
Okay, and so forth. So we have, and when we are up here, we have the, the responsibility despite pressures of doing what we believe is best for the community and I strongly believe that this is what's best for not only for the Bird section and your, your district, but for the, for PGI as a whole and for Punta Gorda as a whole. So I think we just need to go forward and we need to educate our constituents as to the nuances of what we're trying to do here.
I don't disagree.
So when they, when they come to us, we need to go back to them.
I don't disagree with any of that. I'll make a motion to approve the appropriation of funds.
I'll second it.
We have a motion second to approve the appropriation of the funds, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next we have project priorities for the special use fund.
Okay, regarding the project priorities for the special use fund, we would like to open it up for discussion. Staff had recommended a certain set and we can certainly discuss the priorities and if there are any additions or subtractions from the list.
We put together the list, well, one's given and because we just had a settlement agreement, there are a lot of items we could add to the list, there are some we can delete. These are items that we talked about and the Ponce Park, I mean, that, that's part of a settlement discussion. The land purchase for Buckley's Pass, we just approved, that's again, it's a loan, it's just a loan, it'll be paid back by assessment proceeds. We approve moving forward with security enhancements, you don't want to take it out of the special use fund, we can take it out of general fund reserves. City master plan, we think that should come out of the special use fund, it's TPD to be determined because we don't know, nor do we want to give any of the firms a number. You, you will be negotiating that amount with, with whoever firm you decide to rank number one. Buckley's Pass loan, you can do it out of this fund, that's an inter fund or we can go out and get a bank loan if we want, but we don't even know the number yet.
And with that, I mean, wouldn't it be that, that dependent district that's formed for the pass, wouldn't that own its own debt? I mean, wouldn't Buckley's Pass Assessment District own its own debt as, rather than having to come out of
But until you collect the assessment proceeds
But you can go to the bond market ahead of time and then have it be paid back.
We could get a bank loan, sure.
Yeah, but it would come from the Buckley's Pass Assessment District rather than coming from this one.
Of course, but you got to get the money upfront to pay for the construction before the assessment proceeds come in.
I would like to point out that even as the assessment district, usually our loans are in the general funds, it's in the city of Punta Gorda's name even though we're using those funds as the collateral or to repayment method.
I would not, not like to see us use these funds for that, just because these are one-time funds and if we were going to extend a loan from this, we have to wait to get the funds back when we have certainly a litany of priorities that we're, you know, struggling with and I, you know, I know in Burne Stiles, we have things we're working on and if, if for example, the underground utilities were to pass or would pass, I would expect us to go out and take a loan for that and not, you know, and not have the city loan us the money.
I agree with that. I would agree with that.
All right, off the list. Some people brought up increasing reserves.
I have a problem with this.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but I have a problem with this. If we had loan at the end of this, I could be amenable to it, but this is not, this is a one-time asset that we're acquiring from a sale and I would be remiss to think that it would be prudent to put it into our general fund reserves without the idea of getting it paid back for other good structural or durable assets for the city. So I, obviously I'm one that's concerned about our, our reserve, it would seem to me, but I would also want to point out that our reserve is increasing every year, just not at a rate that I would like to see it. I would be somewhat amenable to the idea that this, that if a portion of these funds be held to decide that we would not spend for asset and that that as we increased our reserves, then that would come back to be available for assets through this loan. In other words, if we had, this is a loan aside for, an emergency for the emergency. So if we had another 2,008 tomorrow, the city would be able to be solvent, but with the idea is we'd still have to pay ourselves back. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yes.
For me, this is a priority because this gets us to where we need to be and to know that we do not have a policy, the reason why we're at where we are right now is because we've never had the policy of how to replace the reserves once we've spent those. And when we were talking about this as one of the priorities for this fund, she provided in the material, the GFPA Association Recommended Policy for Return of Use of Reserves. So if we don't put the money in there, I'm, I'm for putting the money in there, we definitely need to have a policy, a reserve policy that we don't have right now. So if, if we would have had that in the past, we would have been working toward replenishing them and I don't, during my time here too, the 16.7% was established as well. We never really had that either, we never really had that as a, a policy, but we've had it now for, for how long have we had that policy?
Quite a few years now.
And that's a best practice?
Yes, so we developed a, a full policy regarding it after we had used down a lot of our reserves during the last economic downturn and as the economy was turning around, trying to achieve that 16.7%, we did make it a formal policy. The board currently had only just wanted to do the 0.5% increase each year.
We do, we do inch, our policy is to inch up 0.5 each year.
Just, just to clarify, what I'm trying to say is, is I would see, I would want to see this as if, for want of another descrip, as a bridge loan and as we in a pursue a policy to get ourselves to the proper reserves, to be this, as a bridge to a buffer so that if something happens beyond our control, that we can't get to it there in time, we do have those funds available, but I'd still want them to be restored back to at some point in the future, under policy or, and under appropriate, where it would be available for asset preservation and/or creation for the city of Punta Gorda. Because we're going to have some, and it's, it's not described here, we're going to have some costs in, in city hall, for example, that we really haven't discussed in entirety in detail yet, that we would, I think would want these kinds of funds available for preservation of, of those assets.
So, go ahead.
I mean, one, see the other side of this is that, look, part of our reserves conversation has become a little esoteric and it's not been where it should be. What I mean by that is that our reserve conversation be is how much operation funds do we have to operate with? We have like two weeks where on average our, our neighbors may have maybe two months. And so part of this is that when we're thinking about preparing for potential issues, hurricanes, X, Y, and Z, actually having let's say two months of reserves on hand is something we're going to want to have just to have on hand as something to have on hand. And so to some degree, I, I do understand all those other expenses, but the other side of it is the other side is that we're very vulnerable, we're unnecessarily vulnerable as a city unlike our neighbors in terms of not really having enough operating funds just ready available, because in the case of say a hurricane hits us, we're going to have to pay those monies in advance and hopefully get reimbursed. And so that's something that we really don't think of in our thinking and that's something that, we've just been blessed that we've not had variables hit us, but variables can hit us anytime.
And to that point, what we've seen with Hurricane Charlie, it could be years and years and years, a decade or more to get the, the monies.
To that end, I would also suggest that we not, be in a huge hurry to spend all of this money because we don't know for sure what FEMA is going to do yet. And I really, really hesitate to be like a burning a hole in our pocket kind of thing where we want to spend all this money right away. I, I would really like for us to keep some money set aside in this fund until we know exactly what FEMA is going to do.
So is anybody amenable to putting it, any amount into the reserves?
Yes. I think the residents have, were very clear when we had our budget discussion that they want to see us get to this. I, I understand what Gary is saying, these are one-time kinds of things and so I'm all in favor of us trying to get our reserves up to the, to the goal, but at this point in time, I think the only thing that I'm, would be willing to say we are obligated to spend money on is Ponce because we are legally obligated. I would like to see the Veterans Park on the list, I don't, I don't want us to spend any money. I've had a request from the Pickleplex Board to ask for $300,000 to build a second 16 courts because it's a great investment for the community. I, I said I would bring this up, it's not a, it's not in the city limits, but it is something that, you know, of course, they feel very strongly that there's a great return on investment and they can demonstrate those numbers. But I, I still, I'm, I think we're, I don't want to see us be too quick to spend these dollars. I really don't.
Gary?
So philosophically, I just want to add one more thing to, to Nancy's, we're committed to Ponce Park. I think we're morally committed to the Boca Grande drainage project also. I think that's a, we have a moral obligation to properly get that infrastructure. I'm not suggesting that that money should all come out of this, that's not what I'm suggesting at all, but I do think that that might be, this could be inappropriate because that's a durable asset for the community for some funding to come out of this, but I absolutely do not feel, I agree too, that we shouldn't just let this, this money evaporate. We should be, be very prudent on how we use it. Again, from my perspective, it should be for durable assets and/or asset preservation for the city. I see Mr. Skillicorn out here, so I would like to say I would not want to see us in a position where we had to, had to sell, we were forced to sell the property on Henry to make our budget balance, okay? So if we want to do it on our own volition maybe, but I'm just saying, but not, not to be in a position to be forced to, to have to do that pair of assets for that reason because of this. So we should be very prudent with this and like I said, I see some other projects that we may want to consider, like I said, with city hall and upgrading that. And security items, I think we also have a, a moral obligation for how, how we fund it out of here or how we fund it out of the budget, I think is just something we have to be very cognizant of.
Well, I think we need to say today what we're going to do. So is everybody's okay with Ponce Park, obviously?
Yeah.
What about the security enhancements?
I mean, this is a one-time.
Yeah, I'm fine with the security enhancements. We know we need to do it sooner than later, actually.
Are these the optional ones that we, that, for future years, is that, is that what's in this 170?
No, this is what we approved.
To me, security is something that is an operational expense. It is a daily thing, it is something we should include in our operation. It's not, to me, it's not something that is in this one-time special kind of fund. It's just something that's a necessity. It's, you know, there are things that, you know, 20 years ago, we would never have even dreamed we would need that we operate with on a daily basis today. So I would say security needs to come out of
We'll take it out of general fund reserves.
Well, I would agree with you, but we don't have a line item in the budget for it.
Well, and I think that, you know, that gets to this way, we, we are presented with this information. We are, we're shown this list and I keep asking for spread, a spreadsheet. If this, if we had a spreadsheet that showed where we are and that this was, these were things, these are all part of something and we're not seeing the total picture and, and we're not presenting the total picture to our, our community to look at. Council's being asked to make some decisions on items that are a part of something and and I feel if we saw, if we had a spreadsheet and could, could show the, the financial situation, then we were able to then really clearly make a decision that's understandable, but
We, we went through the whole budget, we showed you our end, beginning reserves and our ending reserves. These items are outside the budget.
Okay.
Okay? They're in a special fund. So for security enhancements, we can certainly take them out of general fund reserves and get the project accomplished and preserve the money in the special use fund. It can be done if you're uncomfortable taking it out of the special use fund. It's once and done.
Well, I think what Nancy's saying is that we should have a line item in the budget for security.
I agree.
We will put one in and take it out of general fund reserves.
I, I think personally, what I see coming out of this, this special fund right now, the only things that should come out of this special fund right now are the Ponce Park construction and the master plan. Beyond that, I think we should hold off and keep that money set aside just in case. I, just this, this whole FEMA thing hanging over our heads has me very concerned. And I am a, all for the veterans and all for, kudos to General Clark and, or General Clark, Carr and, excuse me, and, and everything that's been done and is going to be done. But given our financial situation, I think that we need to have a, not be so quick to spend the money.
Can we bring the Veterans Park back in its own separate discussion since it's not even on this list to know what the, what the projects are and what your costs associated with those are? Because I know there's numbers out there, there's a big number out there, but what the city could actually do to help soften?
Well, we have, we have a planning budget of $450,000. We broke it up into phases, we can bring the item back for you for a discussion and we can give you, try to give you our estimates for, for the various phases and you can pick and choose. My recommendation is if we're going to do, if we're going to take on Veterans Park Phase Two as a project, yes, it could be a sales tax project, but we won't know that till we vote again, but if you want to do it in order for economies of scale, I wouldn't piecemeal it. I'd just do it. If you're going to do it, we do it and for economies of scale, we just do it all at once. Now, yes, we can piecemeal it, we can do phase here, phase here. We'll bring you that, when do you want it as a discussion item?
Well, I know there's a big event planned for March 2019.
Oh, we can't get the whole thing done?
No, not the whole thing, but I'm, I'm thinking that there should be a priority of making the place look presentable for the, you want to tell them what the event is, please?
March the 30th has been declared, pardon me, March the 30th has been declared the return from Vietnam Day because that's when the prisoners flew back in 1973, the majority of them. And we have never really done anything here locally on that day, so this year we're planning well ahead and putting together a huge program. And also Veterans Day at the gazebo in the Veterans Park will be much larger than it has been in the past. We're looking at a 400 car, car show, displays, bands and it'll last about four hours this year on November 11th, Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we can bring it back as a separate discussion?
Yes.
Yes, I would agree.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll have it itemized. So what I'm hearing is that we So what I'm hearing is that we, and again, none of this gets, none of this gets used until we have firm prices, and like Ponce Park, that's way out there. We're not even there yet.
Right.
City master plan, we're not there yet. You already approved the land purchase for Buckley's Pass. That's it.
So maybe what we could do after the master plan contract is let, bring this back. So we know where we're at, and keep the number for Ponce there. And then in the meantime, we can have the discussion on the Veterans Park, and.
Maybe by then, we'll know what FEMA is doing too.
Yes.
And that would make things a little simpler. I just don't want to see us get in a real crush for finances, and that could happen.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes.
Yes.
I make a motion that we move forward with the expenditure of the proceeds from the Fisherman's Village land sale to fund the $700,000 for Ponce Park construction and the TBD number for the citizens' master plan, and hold the rest in escrow until further notice.
Second. We have a motion in second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. No unfinished business today, but we do have three items under new business. The first is which the discussion regarding downtown merchants association farmer market, LBT.
Okay, I guess I'm the one that brought this forward. And as John outlined, they have a high and a low season, and they're paying their taxes on the high season. That's the way the ordinance is constructed. It is placing a burden on them that I thought we should discuss to see if there's a way that we could properly devise some relief for them in that regard. It's well-attended, it does bring a lot of foot traffic to downtown. A number of the, a number of the quote vendors really aren't vendors, they are bands, or they may be nonprofits. Perhaps we could view them a little bit differently. As far as whether we discuss them as a flea market or as a farmer's market, I think that depends on which is more expedient for us to be able to handle this in the future, because we don't want to alleviate, give relief to people that don't need it. But I do think that this, there might be some accommodation that we should be able to hopefully work out here today if we're all so inclined.
Yes.
I think it's not really a flea market that we're talking about here. I think the farmer's market is a completely separate entity that is very valuable to the city overall and brings a lot of traffic. You're right, Gary, I think it should be handled differently and perhaps not subject to this particular section of the code. I think it would make sense for us to assess the farmer's market based on an average, perhaps on a quarterly average of how many vendors actually participate, rather than the highest number, which the flea market ordinance stipulates it's based on the highest number. It would make more sense to me if we could just take an average of how many, and the chamber can provide the numbers for us of how many vendors participate every week, but go and take an average and then assess them annually based on a quarterly average of what the maximum number was each quarter. I think that might make it easier.
And I think we should give a break again to the entertainment, the street artists, et cetera. Perhaps the nonprofits, I'm kind of negotiable on that, because they do have a purpose of why they're there. You know, whether it's for fundraising or whatever it is. But even then, I think that, you know, maybe there could be some accommodation considered there. But certainly for, if we're having street entertainment, I think that that lends to the ambiance of Plata Gorda. That's a value brought to Plata Gorda, and that maybe we shouldn't be taxing that for sure. And so that's why I'm glad we're having this discussion.
Karen, do you want to give a little history of how we've gotten here? Because this has come up many, many times.
It has come up. First, I want to clarify that the code specifically states that the definition of flea markets does apply to farmer's markets. It was not included in the, in Section 12-18, but it is in another section of the code where it specifically states farmer's markets and flea markets are basically handled the same way. So this is not, I realize that may be confusing, but it's in the code that a farmer's market is. Okay. As far as the nonprofits, I'm looking at one of our lists. I don't believe we include the nonprofits. The artists and the musicians, Perry Turner in our office is the person who goes out and actually physically counts, visibly sees, and she has spoken to those individuals, and they do sell their CDs, they do sell their artwork. We were told just this past weekend by Jerry Purceller that rather than charging them, they do charge them, but rather than charging them the weekly fee, as stated in their application, they pay the market a percentage of their sales. So in the past, we relied on the operators of the market to provide us with numbers, but there were a lot of conflicting, a lot of conflicting information. Newspaper articles would say, written or in an interview with the operators of the market, that they were proud to announce there were 48 vendors, but we were told there were 21, for just as an example. So this went on. So we decided that we were going to go ahead, and it does provide for in the code that the city clerk's office will do the inspection, and we started doing that. At one point, prior to my becoming clerk, there was a decision made to do a quarterly inspection with an averaged amount supposedly agreed to between one council member and the operators of the market, Mr. Purceller in particular. However, that's not the way the code reads. And so that's not the appropriate way to do it and be in compliance with the code. Staff does not have the authority to supersede the provisions of the code. So we try to be true to the code. We don't go out every week and inspect, we don't have staff to do that. However, we do our best to do a count once a month, and that is to be, that is to be as fair as possible. And we have the History Park Farmer's Market, and we do them on the same weekend, again, to be as fair as possible that if people are out on Saturday, because it's great weather, they're likely to be out on Saturday and Sunday on that weekend. And so, you know, if it's a washout, then we're not going to count one and not the other. So yeah, it's come up before. I don't think it should be based on, you know, I realize that it is seasonal.
Can we change the code? Can we amend the code as a council?
That's actually a question for our city attorney.
Can you just mention the Equity Study Commission? Because Mr. Purceller sat on that, I believe.
There was an Equity Study Commission fall, in 1995, following some new legislation, and the current fees were established. And we have not changed our fees since then. And then there was another Equity Study Commission in 2011. And Mr. Purceller was on that, on that committee. There were three meetings of the commission, and then there was a council discussion where there was some concern that the commission wasn't strictly following the guidelines of what they were set out to do. And in addition, there was also some new legislation proposed at the same time. City council agreed to put the commission in abeyance until the legislation was adopted. The commission met one more time, more or less to close down what they were doing. But there was a motion made by Mr. Purceller at that meeting to reduce the fee for the farmer's market. There was a subsequent council discussion, and council, there were two council members who disagreed with reducing the fee. There was no formal decision made, and there was no further discussion. The only action taken after that was to adopt the new legislation and bring our code into compliance with the new laws. And that was in 2011. So my understanding is that you, we have two, let me also explain. We, the 1995 commission established, for simplicity's sake, I assume, and to be consistent with the true intent of the legislation, two classifications. We only have two classifications in our code for business tax receipts. That's a licensed professional, that's a doctor, that's a lawyer. It's a hairdresser, anyone who has to have a license from the state of Florida, licensed in order to do their profession. And a non-licensed professional, that includes all retail and similar businesses, restaurants and that, and that sort of thing. And so when the code says that the market will be charged one fee per vendor, the only fee there is in our code is the $63 per tax receipt. And that's why they're charged the way they are.
Well, and whereas the city has home rule, albeit eroding, one of the few things that we cannot do is establish a tax. That's the legislature's exclusive domain. And so our local business tax receipt has to be consistent with the state statute. And that's why, you know, every, so often, we go through this process that's mandated by the state to determine what our categories will be and what the fees assessed per category would be. We can't change that by changing the ordinance. Correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, but what seems to be at issue here is not the fee itself, but the method by which the fee is calculated. And that's provided for in the ordinance, and we can, city council can amend the ordinance to adjust that. I don't know what the history was. I remember the discussion, but I don't remember the background as to how we came up with the highest number of merchants on a given single day. But there are options that might be available to us to amend the ordinance as to how the fee will be implemented.
Yes.
I mean, one thing I think a middle place may be, if we can have it so they can exclude the nonprofits and artists and keep the fee schedule the same. Because ultimately, I think the logic behind it being charged at the highest rate is that we do need to benefit from our season as well. So I think that, I mean, I think that, like I said, the farmers, the market at the History Park has no issue paying this in the same conditions. But I think that because artists and nonprofits are involved in this one, that's a factor, that's in this and the other. And I think if we can exclude them from that number, then that's a way we can meet a good middle place.
I would just say again, just for clarification, I don't believe we do include the nonprofits. We have been including artists and musicians who are selling. But if, you know, we could certainly.
We can exclude them possibly.
Well, correct, if I'm not mistaken, one of the things that we went into, and my memory is very, not very clear on it, but we actually went and got an attorney general's opinion on our ability to exclude certain categories of merchants that otherwise would be covered. And we can't do that. So if they're, if they're vendors, no matter what kind of hat they're wearing, they would be included in the tax. If they're not vendors, then they, we wouldn't be charging them a tax.
Okay. So I have, it's my understanding that the farmer's market does charge a fee for the full-time and then for the temporary? So that would be somebody who is going to be there probably during season, I'm assuming. There's also then a weekly. So my question is, how many times can you be a weekly before you have to become a temporary? Four? So I think, to me, a vendor is somebody who is there, who has, is at least either a full-time or a temporary, maybe even a weekly, who has put up a tent or however, has established themselves. The artists, yes, I might be an artist that I sell a CD if somebody wants one, but I'm not there as a, in a tent for the exclusive purpose of just selling CDs. I am not an artist who's there with the exclusive, I'm there today just to sell my art. I'm only there for.
By 25% at this juncture, and then visit it next year and see if it, you want to come up and speak? Because I'm asking the question. Could you answer these questions for me, John?
Yes.
Thank you.
I know that between the city clerk's office and Jerry Purceller, there has been not the best communication. So may I make this suggestion? I handle as the treasurer of the association. Jerry brings me the money from the market every single Monday or Tuesday. So I know exactly how many vendors have paid to be there the previous, for that, for the month that's upcoming. They all pay a month in advance. So I could gladly share that information with the city clerk's office. So they have a confirmed number of who's actually paying. Because Nancy's absolutely right. I mean, the guy playing the bongo drums, he's not there to sell, he's there for ambiance. But if somebody, if you went up and said, "I like your music, do you happen to have a CD?" Well, here's one I have in my pocket, I'm $63, or they are $63 out of pocket. And there's many of those. And the disparity between what is March and what is September is significant. And it's just a matter of, it's just a matter of accounting. And at the end of the day, there was, there were two events, and this is nobody's fault, but two events this year that the downtown merchants put on in order to basically pay this. We've willingly, over the last 10 years, paid all of this money, exceeding $4,000 each month. And I don't know how many other businesses in town, not month, a year.
I was gonna say, whoa.
A year. I don't know how many other businesses pay $4,000, but it's significant. So we paid it. But it was paid for by two events that have both been washed out this year. So it's critical, we could end up with no market, and that's as serious as it is. So if that can help with the city clerk's office to give them an accounting, I'd be more than happy to do that.
I mean, I think from what she said in the past, the accounting was a little fuzzy. So if we could count on you to give us a real count.
Yeah, I'll tell you exactly the number based on the money that comes through the account.
Couldn't we take an average?
Well, again, it would require an amendment to the ordinance as to how you're going to calculate it.
Okay, because it's got to be fair for any market that.
We can do that?
Amend the ordinance?
Yes.
Yeah, certainly.
I mean, the History Park's in the same situation, but they've just paid theirs, correct?
And the amendment is the methodology of getting to the fee that's already been set.
I'm making a motion to amend to do an average.
Second.
Well, we'll take this as a consensus direction, we'll come back with a.
With language.
With an amendment.
Yes, correct.
In the meantime, then, we put a statement for the, can we make a motion for this bill that's before the farmer's market? Or what do we do with that bill? Do we hold off until we?
If I may, that bill will start to increase if not paid by September 30th, is that correct? It'll start attracting fees, so if it can be put on hiatus until you decide what to do with it, it would be greatly appreciated.
I would also recommend that you give us a list, not just a number, but the names of the businesses too, so we have some way to verify.
Now, understand that that's, what I get from Jerry is monthly, because he collects at the beginning of September for the next month. So I can give you the list, but what might change are the weeklies, but there aren't really that many, it's pretty consistent.
Yeah, because you're collecting two months in advance, correct?
A month in advance.
Okay. So you know who's gonna be there.
Yes.
That would be fine. But I would like the names.
If a nonprofit or a political campaign or one of those candidates comes in at the beginning, it might change slightly, but I can fix that when I email that information.
But those shouldn't be that you pay for anyway.
That, currently, I believe we are paying for that.
I don't think we should, a nonprofit. I mean, nonprofits don't pay...
I didn't see any nonprofit.
They don't pay it anyway.
I don't see a nonprofit on this list.
No.
Or maybe, what is Florida reclaimed?
But, but let's define ourselves here. If it's a nonprofit that's not acting as a vendor, that's one thing. When the History Park was acting as a vendor, same way as the, in the way that the farmer's market was, they sought to be excluded from the fee because they're a nonprofit. And we advise that that can't be done. Well, as far as the fee that we're talking about today, that 4,000, are you asking that, that the late fee be waived while the city council is considering an amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
I thought that's what I heard.
Yes.
And certainly that's your prerogative.
So you can make that motion?
Make a motion, yes.
Are you withdrawing the other motion?
Yeah, withdraw the other.
All the old motion and...
And I withdraw my second, but I'll second your new motion.
Okay. So we're suspending it. So it's suspended until you decide...
We're holding it until we figure this out.
Okay. Fair enough?
And then if anything change, cause I know History Park has already paid. So if anything changes, they need to be afforded.
I would have to verify. I don't have access to the system here for me to look that up to see if they've already made payment.
Well, verbally, they told me they did, so.
Okay.
Just to be clear that we need to afford them whatever.
Yeah, I would agree.
I would agree, yeah.
So we need to vote on that.
Consistent.
Okay. Let's vote on suspending the late fees for the LBT for now. All in favor?
For just the farmer's market, the flea market category.
Flea market category.
All right.
Specifically this bill.
Specifically this bill.
This one.
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor? Aye opposed, carried unanimously.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next discussion of design standards for electrical, electric, I keep wanting to say electrical. Electric vehicle charging...